...I had for my wife Ruby. She committed me, before she passed, to get this job done. And it's that power of love that continued to move us forward during the most difficult and isolated and challenging times of this struggle.
Even today, AB 60 authored by then-assemblyman Louis Alejo in 2013 has its critics. Some say it rewards undocumented residents with privileges they don't deserve, but others call it an effective safety measure. Supporters point to the fact that licenses do require passing driving tests to ensure people know the rules of the road. Having licenses might also discourage drivers afraid of being deported from fleeing accident scenes. A Stanford University study seems to back that claim, finding there were 4,000 fewer hit-and-run crashes in the law's first year.
There's lessons to be learned, and we will continue to win with DACA, immigration reform, dignity, and rights for all working men and women. Much gracias.
At City Hall, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The councilman's late wife, Ruby Sadio, died of breast cancer in 2002. Denim Day is known as the day people wear jeans to work, but it's got a deeper meaning. It's a stand against sexual violence and all forms of sexual harassment. Anna Marcos takes us to the rally.
Rape culture ends in an all-instated day. I don't need to say no, because I never said yes.
A spirited rally on this denim day, the Sexual Violence Prevention Campaign has added meaning this year, as it joins the Me Too movement with a strong message: Sexual harassment, not on my watch, and a mission: To end rape culture now. The voices of the victims span all races and cultures.
As early as three years old, I think that's as far as I can remember, I remember being sexually abused. I remember my stepfather coming into my room at night, fondling me, touching me. I remember him making me wash up and shower because I needed to smell good for him.
For a long time, our society has normalized the rape culture.
The story goes, "The man is my cousin-in-law, and I am six years old. His penis is a strange creature in his hands."
It made me think that I was unworthy, that I was inadequate, that I was tainted, that I was undeserving of love, that I was unlovable, and I actually believed that it was my fault. What must be wrong with me that, from an early age, that I had to endure this?
City leaders also taking a stand, declaring City Hall a harassment-free zone. They are working to make harassment and sexual assaults easier to report in the City Hall workplace.
I want to say to the men as well, this is your issue too. This is not a women's issue, this is a human issue.
Your silence is complicity in this situation, and it needs to end now. If you see it, you must report it.
Time's up, men, and it's been up for a long time.
But the stories of sexual violence don't just end on the steps of City Hall. They're everywhere, including out here on the streets. City leaders say 91% of women who end up on the street have been victims of physical or sexual violence.
I've been living outside for 27 years, and ever since I got here, I'm being harassed and everything.
But for those marking this day, wearing jeans and speaking out just might start to turn things around.
The story goes, every woman has a story.
And I matter, and if I can use my voice to make it so this doesn't happen to another person, then so be it.
From big to small to smaller yet, the change has begun. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
L.A. Metro officials also joined the rally, declaring the metro transit system a harassment-free zone as well. May is the month dedicated to paying tribute to the generations of Jewish Americans who have helped form the fabric of American history, culture, and society. Los Angeles has been home to large populations of the Jewish community. Rasha Goel has more.
Yana, I'm at City Hall, where officials kicked off Jewish Heritage Month, celebrating and recognizing Jewish history and culture. And here's an interesting fact, if you didn't know, but Mayor Eric Garcetti is the city's first elected Jewish mayor.
I'm the first elected Jewish mayor, and very proud of that. But we, as was mentioned, we have so many firsts that were here in Los Angeles. Our first Jew, Jacob Frankfurt, arrived in 1841. Morris Goodman was the first Jewish city council member, and that was in 1850. This was a town that didn't really care back then about whether you were Jewish or not. It opened itself up.
Throughout the 1920s and '30s, about 40% of the population in Boyle Heights was Jewish. The core of the community was Brooklyn Avenue, since renamed Caesar Chavez Avenue, which hosted a string of Jewish-owned businesses, including the original Cantor's Deli.
The 5th Council District is also proud of giving birth to Betzettic Legal Services on Fairfax Avenue, on being the first home in Los Angeles to many Holocaust survivors, as well as immigrants from the former Soviet Union and Iran, as well as the location of the Museum of Tolence in the Simon Wiesenthal Center.
The overwhelming story of Jews in L.A. is one of triumph. Whether it is the great storytelling culture brought from the old country that founded many of the major film studios that would ultimately shape global culture, or the love of scholarship that founded many of the great institutions here in Los Angeles.
Councilmember Paul Krikorian talked about the similarities between the Armenian and Jewish communities.
A common history of two ancient peoples who were primarily diasporic peoples throughout their history, who longed for a free and independent homeland and kept that as a vision and a dream that maintained us united over the course of centuries. Both of our communities found refuge here in Los Angeles.
And a lot of folks, when you think about Jewish heritage, people get confused, because, yes, it's a religion, Judaism is a religion, but it's also a culture, it's also an ethnicity.
An exhibit is on display for the month of May in City Hall, highlighting Jewish history and the contributions in Los Angeles.
And it's so beautiful that the city has come to recognize that and have come together to celebrate the Jewish community and all of its accomplishments.
Jewish Heritage Month recognizes the unique and colorful past of the community while celebrating the present and future. From City Hall, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Are you finally ready to move out of your apartment and buy that first house? Well, for a lot of people, this isn't easy, but free workshops sponsored by the city are helping to make the American dream of owning a home come true. Gil Reyes has more.
You got a copy of your credit report?
Like these other renters intently listening, Terri Bistline says she's finally doing it. She's finally buying a house.
Because the rents are exorbitant today, and it makes sense to invest in your own home than to pay somebody else.
This seminar, hosted by the group called New Economics for Women, showed people how to buy that first home, offering tips on how to get a mortgage, building the necessary savings to secure loans, and avoiding predatory lenders. The workshop took place at Councilman Curran Price's district office in South Los Angeles.
Many families believe that homeownership is out of their reach because they don't have the down payment, or maybe they don't have the credit profile to be able to get a home loan. And so I would invite those individuals to attend one of our workshops so that they can learn more about the programs available to them.
L.A. City also offers low-income, first-time homebuyers up to $60,000 in financial aid if they qualify. More free seminars are coming up. Log on to neweconomicsforwomen.org/homebuyer to register. I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The L.A. Rams' Cletes for Character program inspires young, sports-minded kids from the inner city, and what bigger inspiration than former NFL player Jonathan Franklin? Anna Marcos brings us his inspiring story.
Former NFL football player Jonathan Franklin was once an inspiration out in the field, but even off the field, he is still inspiring his community in South L.A. to dream big and become something. The former UCLA guard and running back got drafted into the NFL, where he played with the Green Bay Packers.
Essentially, Jonathan Franklin grew up in South Central L.A. and went to Dorsey High School.
Against all odds, he got to play in the big time. Then, a severe spinal injury sidelined Franklin, but he wasn't done with football. He now works for the L.A. Rams, giving back to the community by inspiring kids like this team of young varsity football players at Locke High School in South L.A., teaching them that while football may be their life, there is also life after football.
I want you to know your worth goes beyond just the game of football.
Franklin is giving out gear and shoes and some words of wisdom as part of the Rams' Cletes for Character program.
The reason of that is to instill in the power of education, character, and goal-setting within their lives to look beyond just the game of football, and self-worth, and who they are, and confidence why they're playing this game.
And in this empowerment session, the young men get to talk about their own dreams and goals.
I just want to be successful so that my younger siblings could always have some fallback.
It's a blessing to actually have people who've been to where I want to get to actually come and talk to us about how their life is going and the stuff that they've been through to get to where I want to be in the future.
I think it's amazing that the Rams are looking at Locke High School, because it's like a ghetto school, but it's good that they're looking at us.
You know, we're an inner-city school, kind of underlooked, so they just want to show some support.
That support comes with hope, hope that even a kid from an inner-city school in South L.A. can dream big and make it big, and still be making it big even after his goals have changed. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The Rams' Cletes for Character program visits schools throughout the L.A. USD system. Metro officials promote worker safety, the city celebrates Cinco de Mayo, and a dangerous intersection in North Hollywood just got a lot safer. All these stories in City Beat. In commemoration of National Safety Week in the city, metro officials called on construction workers and contractors to always be mindful of their safety as they perform various infrastructure projects in the region: Metro's Purple Line Extension Project, Crenshaw-LAX Transit Corridor, and the Regional Connector, among other projects.
We're highlighting making safe choices, thinking before you act, and act in a safe way.
The Latino community came out to celebrate Cinco de Mayo in the city. One celebration took place at the Los Angeles Historic State Park in downtown L.A., featuring traditional live music and food, along with dozens of other vendors. Cinco de Mayo is an annual celebration held on May 5th. The date is observed to commemorate the Mexican Army's unlikely victory over the French Empire at the Battle of Cuelbla on May 5th, 1862.
I feel that we should all get together and celebrate Cinco de Mayo and be proud of our heritage.
City Councilmember Paul Krikorian activated a new traffic signal at Witsit Avenue and Voe Street in North Hollywood, an intersection often used by neighborhood kids to access the city's Witsit Soccer Complex. The new signal is the result of funds Councilmember Krikorian secured to improve pedestrian and bicycle safety in the San Fernando Valley.
When you have a street with 17,000 cars a day, many of which are speeding and distracted, that creates a great danger for those kids who are trying to come to those parks. It's our responsibility to eliminate that danger and make sure that they can utilize their park and enjoy their neighborhood in a safe way.
It's a day to create an impact for generations to come while building a sustainable environment today. Rasha Goel has more on how Angelenos came together to help beautify their city on a tradition that's over 100 years old.
With shovels in hand, volunteers of all ages were ready to get their hands dirty as they planted new trees in celebration of Arbor Day. Arbor Day is an annual observance that celebrates the role of trees in our lives and promotes tree planting and care.
All of you are here making a difference for future generations. A lot of people talk about community beautification. You're here today making it happen. A lot of people talk about fighting against climate change. You're here today making it happen. A lot of people talk about biodiversity. You're here making that happen.
400 volunteers came out to plant 173 new trees in the North Hollywood area as part of a beautification project. The project will transform a concreted corridor into a greenway potted with drought-resilient street trees.
They help save energy, they help save money, they help save all kinds of things just by planting a tree in your neighborhood and taking care of it. It's something really easy that you can do that's great for your home value, it's great for the environment.
The planting is on a 1.6-mile stretch of Vinland Avenue between Oxnard Avenue and Strathern Street.
We have all kinds of trees, lemon, lime trees, and we just want to make the city more beautiful.
Beautiful and sustainable for years to come. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
As a formal holiday, Arbor Day was first observed in 1872, but tree planting festivals are as old as civilization. The tree has appeared throughout history and literature as the symbol of life. Well, here's your chance to spay or neuter your cat at no charge, come out for a senior citizen fair, and enjoy free harbor boat tours at the Port of L.A. All this and this week's things to do. If you own a cat or kitten, here's your chance to get them spayed or neutered for free. Throughout the month of May, L.A. Animal Services will be offering free cat spay-neuter certificates to all L.A. city residents, regardless of income levels. By taking advantage of free certificates for cats and kittens, the community will help stem the tide of pet overpopulation that L.A. Animal Services faces daily in each of the six service centers. By spaying or neutering your cat or kitten, you are helping L.A. Animal Services get one step closer to ending the Los Angeles community's pet overpopulation, and help L.A. Animal Services place more animals in permanent homes. To apply and receive a free certificate the same day, the public is encouraged to visit their nearest L.A. City Animal Services Center. L.A. city residents can now also apply for a free certificate online at laspayneuter.com. If you're a senior, don't miss the 10th Annual Senior Symposium and Job Fair. Spend the day visiting a variety of vendors and service providers. Take advantage of the many health screenings offered at no cost. Win a raffle prize donated by vendors in attendance. Listen to guest speakers and presentations, and get help in resume building. Meet agencies looking to hire, assist older adults or caregivers, or search for part-time or full-time opportunities. Call 818-705-2345 to RSVP. Free lunch and continental breakfast to those who RSVP. The Senior Fair takes place Saturday, May 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. at the One Generation Senior Enrichment Center located at 18255 Victory Boulevard in Reseda. As part of World Trade Week, the Port of Los Angeles will host free harbor boat tours. The public tours are one hour and will depart every 30 minutes from both Banning's Landing Community Center in Wilmington and the Los Angeles Maritime Museum in San Pedro. For more than 90 years, World Trade Week, an initiative of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, has been the nation's most extensive and unique program of its kind, dedicated to educating the public about the importance and benefits of global trade to the local and U.S. economy. Related events and programs are held throughout Southern California every year in May, coinciding with World Trade Month. The public boat tours take place on Saturday, May 19th, from 10:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. For more, visit portoflos angeles.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning. Today is Friday, May 18th. Shh. If you could please take a seat, please take your seats. Anyway, good morning. It is May 18th, Friday. I want to welcome you to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, Buscano, Sadio, Engler, Harris, Tossen, Weiser, Kresk, Krikorian, Martinez, Ofero, Press, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ofero moves. Cocorion seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonn moves, and Mr. Buscagino seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, Department of Building and Safety recommends that council continue items 1A through 1C, which is the entirety of item 1, to June 19.
Okay, so, so ordered. Continue.
Very good, sir. That brings us to item 2. It's an item notice for public hearing. It is recommended that council, after receiving public comment, close the public hearing and continue its consideration of the Budget and Finance Committee report relative to the mayor's proposed 2018-19 budget for the city to a special council meeting on Monday, May 21st at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, that's exactly what we'll do.
Mr. President, we do have cards on this matter.
All right. Continue.
Items 3 through 10 are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 3, 6, and 7 have been posted and circulated and are now before council for consideration.
Okay, so let's bring those up for a vote. Let's open the roll. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, continue.
And, Mr. President, Mr. Sadio has actually just walked in. If we could reconsider items 3 and 4, the two ordinances, and then vote again, we would have 12 for those.
Okay, let's do that. So the first vote is on reconsideration?
Yes.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now, let's actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, items 11 through 13 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body.
Cards on all three items, sir.
Let's hold those and move forward.
Very good, sir. It's a bit too early for the special meeting, so that would take council back to items called special or general, or excuse me, general public comment or presentations.
All right, let me look for Mr. O'Farrell. Would you be, why don't we kick things off with a Mr. O'Farrell presentation? Mitch, the floor is yours.
Colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. With all these beautiful, young faces that you see in the chambers today, there is a very, very tragic and sad backdrop that we're all dealing with this morning because there was yet another mass shooting at a high school in the United States. This time at Santa Fe, Texas, where we know of at least eight young students who lost their lives today because of a mass shooting with an assault weapon. It is in this backdrop that in Los Angeles today, we celebrate youth and accomplishments and hope for the future. And all of the potential of young people. And I just had to mention that because it is more important than ever that as a society, as a civilization, that we highlight the incredible works of our youth while at the same time, fighting to the end for gun safety across the United States so that our young people do not have to live in fear or with the stress that some crazed person could come into any school and start shooting. I don't want to belabor that, colleagues, but it has to be mentioned. I want to thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, for giving me the privilege today in this council chambers on this morning. And let you know that it is such an honor for me personally and professionally to stand here today with the incredible youth at Belmont High School in the 13th District. I stand here today surrounded by the boys and girls cross-country teams from Belmont High, led by Coach Roman Gomez, and this talented team of boys cross-country competitors who won their second consecutive Division III city championship. And for that, they deserve a huge round of applause. It's worth noting that this is the boys' 21st city title since 1982. In all, Belmont has won over 50 LAUSD city titles when you add the girls, the JV, and the freshman/sophomore team titles.
Let's give them one more round of applause. That's phenomenal, young people. That's unbelievable. Mr. O'Farrell, I know you're proud. Unbelievable.
It's about to get even more interesting here. The girls' cross-country team won the city award for having the highest grade point average in this city. Check this out. Their combined GPA of the young ladies standing with me today is 3.8. 3.8. Boys, do you consider that a challenge? Are you gonna get to 3.8? All right, all right. 4.1, okay, let's do it. Belmont cross-country has graduated 100% of its athletes for the last five years. 100%. During the same time, 95% of Belmont High School graduates have been accepted to two- and four-year colleges. This accomplishment is even more impressive considering a few of the dynamic team members were new to this country. Here's a quote from Coach Gomez. "I feel really proud of the kids, especially because I can identify with their hardship coming to this country. I myself came here as a teen, and it was a challenge with a language acquisition, but I tell the students to trust in their talents and continue to be hard-working individuals." Belmont High School is also among the schools with the highest number of unaccompanied minors from Central America. I would like to welcome, first of all, Lester Solis, 9th grade, to share a few words. Lester.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Los Angeles City Council. Thank you. I am a Belmont athlete, and my name is Lester Solis, and it is my first year there, and I am a freshman, obviously. All right. What defines a Belmont cross-country runner? There are three things that define a Belmont cross-country runner. A Belmont cross-country runner must have heart, they must have dedication, and they must also have good sportsmanship. Heart. The definition of heart for a Belmont cross-country runner means is to be able to work out hard throughout the season. Yes, there's times where we train and it's hot or it's cold, but no matter what, we have that heart to be able to push through that, through that, through that hard time, you know? And even though at times here in L.A. it gets hot like a desert, but us as Belmont runners, we are able to defeat that desert and be able to survive in it. Next, a Belmont runner must be able to have the dedication to train. On the weekends, we wake up early in the morning, and then on the weekdays, we still have to go train after a long day of school. We still have to go to the park, train, and make sure that we do good. Lastly, a Belmont runner must have good sportsmanship. Yes, it's a sport. Yes, we all want to win. It's competitively, you know? But no matter what, at the end of the day, you always must be able, you must always have to be able to shake your hand with the opponent and say, you know what? You did good. But of course, us as Belmont, we'd rather win. Finally, I'd like to thank you all for inviting us here. I'm very happy, I bet my teammates are, of course, and it's good to be in your presence here. And most importantly, I feel very blessed to be with my teammates, my coach, and being here with you guys. And yeah, I mean, thank you very much. Have a good day, and bless you all.
Same to you. Mr. O'Farrell, I have a member on the queue.
Let's, there's more?
Go ahead.
And let's just hold off until then.
Okay, just give me a signal.
All right. How about a big round of applause for 9th grader Lester Solis? A championship team can only have a champion as its coach, and that is Coach Roman Gomez. Here's a little background about Coach Gomez. Graduated from Belmont High School in 1985. Graduated from USC with a political science major in 1989, and went on to teach social studies at Belmont High School in the fall of 1989. He is now a resource specialist program teacher. In 2014, he returned to coach the cross-country teams, and in two years, led the team to their first title since 2002. A few of his accomplishments here. 27, 2018, LAUSD Cross Country Coach of the Year. 27, 2018, California Coaches Association Girls Cross Country Coach of the Year, and in those same years, finalist for Teacher of the Year. So here's a man who graduated from Belmont High School and returned and is spending his professional career in the neighborhood that nurtured him to become who he is. Here's another fun fact about Roman and his brother Manny, who coaches the girls' cross-country team at Lincoln High School. Both led their teams to a championship on the same day. The Belmont cross-country team, or tradition, rather, is going strong thanks to the Gomez brothers. Colleagues, I introduce to you Coach Roman Gomez.
Thank you for having us. Good morning. I first want to thank our staffers for CD 13, William Mayala, Juan Fregoso, and Hector Vega, as well as council member Mitch O'Farrell. Thank you, Mr. President, Council President Herb Wesson, for having us. This brings me back a lot of memories because when I was a student at SC, I worked as an intern for Richard Alatorre, and...
Who just celebrated a birthday a couple days ago.
Awesome guy. And late President John Ferraro wrote the letter of recommendation, and that's how I was able to get into USC. Awesome guy. I just want to say that my heart is with the students and their families, of the students in Santa Fe, Texas. I want to, you know, our prayers are with those families. Again, thank you all for having us. I am so proud of these kids. They're working hard. I'm really proud. I couldn't say enough about their character, their commitment to their community, and I'm just so proud of them. So I want to really thank you for having us here, and we're gonna do a cheer just because we do this at the beginning of every race and at the end of every race, okay? So we're just gonna do a quick one. Belmont on three. Put your hands in the middle. One, two, three.
Belmont!
Thank you.
Okay, I want to recognize Mr. Sadio.
Mr. O'Farrell, let me congratulate you and thank you for bringing these young men and women to the chambers. I want to congratulate them. My father, this young man here, went to Belmont, and he, when he came to Los Angeles, 1941, he enrolled at the junior high school and then at Belmont, and then left to be a paratrooper. The history, though, Mr. Gomez, of running at Belmont is an incredible history, and there are Olympians who have come. I have a friend, you may remember him, Tafari Gebay, Ethiopian. You know him, Mr. Wesson, from the AFL-CIO?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, from Orange County. He is now in Washington, D.C. He is a leader in the labor movement, but before that, he was a runner. I think he had the city championship.
He won a city championship.
Yeah, he won a city championship. And so, I live down the street, about a block away from the school, in the 1st District. It's right at the border, across from the Roy Ball Learning Center. And so I just want to say, congratulations. Of course, all of them graduate. Of course, all of you will go on to college. Of course, all of you will be successful because you've already demonstrated the discipline necessary to be a leader and to be successful in life, and that is all those miles you put in, all the team discipline, all the sacrifices. Everything that you do to be a champion is what's gonna make you a champion in life, and so I just want to applaud all of you. It's the same experience we have with students run L.A. When people run, they just get this incredible discipline, self-respect, pride, and from that, you become successes in life. So congratulations to all of you and your families. God bless you.
Give them a round of applause. Back to you, Mr. O'Farrell.
So, colleagues, on behalf of all of us, we want to present this certificate of recognition for a championship year for the boys and girls of Belmont High for this incredible accomplishment with their championships and their incredibly high grade point average on the girls' team. It's a championship year for a championship team. Go Sentinels! We would like to present Mitch O'Farrell with a Belmont jersey.
All right. I know he's gonna use it when he goes out running from now on. There you go, Mr. O'Farrell.
I love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Belmont High School.
Congratulations, Mitch.
Thank you.
So as they're exiting, I want to recognize Mr. Bloomingfield for our next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. First, we're gonna bring the girls up. We've got two presentations. Colleagues, we've got some hunters in the house today. Are there hunters in the house? Yeah. And Mr. Cores, I'm just talking about the school mascot. No trouble there. So please welcome the Canoga Park High School Girls' Cross Country Team. They were the 2017 Los Angeles City Section 2, Division 2 champions.
Let's give the champs a round of applause. It's this champion day.
Now, even more amazing, the girls' cross-country team is composed of athletes who mostly had never competed before in the sport. For most of them, the cross-country team is the first sport that they ever joined. These athletes usually come to the coaches unaware of the time commitment and unaware of the fact that cross-country is one of the toughest sports to compete in. The practices, as I've been told, are not only difficult, but they are real tests of endurance and inner strength. Now, the girls on the team mostly come from households of lower income. Canoga Park, for those of you who don't know, is in the flat expanse of the San Fernando Valley. It's not known for having hills to practice on. Therefore, many of these young women have to travel to destinations where they can get this challenging practice run. And Coach Vasquez has said that one of the many challenges that these girls face is that sometimes their families have issues with girls playing sports. Some of the parents see sports as activities for boys and are often unfamiliar with the benefits of school athletics. And some, and another challenge is parental involvement has been low because the parents work in jobs that don't have the flexibility for parents to leave in the middle of the day to go support their children. But these coaches have spent time educating and working with the parents and turning that around to the benefit of participating in school athletics, teaching them that the skills about running, that the skills that are developed, it develops discipline, time management, camaraderie, respect, appreciation, and pride in their school. The results, well, the results are what we're seeing here. They have paid off. These girls are not only excelling on the course, but they're also excelling in the classroom, which is equally amazing. In the past three years, all of the graduating girls have been accepted and attended college, except for one who went to the Army, so they've all been incredibly successful. And despite the obstacles they faced, in 2015, the Canoga Park Girls' Cross Country Team won their first title. Team won their first title. Two years later, here we are, this amazing title. Now, before I present this certificate, I want to introduce their coach, Gonzalo Vasquez, to say a few words.
Welcome, Coach. Welcome.
Thank you, council members. Congratulations to my girls' cross-country team. One of the coaches, Coach Vasquez, my other coach, Coach Mohammed Hadad. Our girls' cross-country team made history in two thousand and fifteen when they became the first women's team in Canoga Park's one-hundred-and-two-year history to win a girl's sport. In two thousand and seventeen, they followed that with a second championship. Most of these athletes have never participated in organized running, and in many cases, joining the cross-country team was the first team that they ever joined. Distance running, anybody will tell you, is by far the hardest sport. It requires much discipline, dedication, and a little something that I call guts. In every race, you're competing against a cruellest competitor, and that's yourself. No matter how fast you go, there's still room for improvement in doing better, setting a new personal goal. You have to be a little crazy to do this sport. We've had to be inventive about our workouts. We don't have hills, as the councilman earlier said. It can get up to a hundred and fifteen degrees in the valley. We have stretches of more than ten days with temperatures over one hundred degrees. That means that we can't work out during the day. We also have to, we also have to go and invade our local neighborhoods. None of our athletes drive, so that means the transportation is a challenge. This track season, we had to train at five forty-five in the morning from January to April. As a result, you get individuals that are highly organized, who know how to prioritize. Our cross-country team has the highest GPA of all sports in the school. Every graduating senior will attend college. Making the honor roll is expected. The question is not, are you going to college, but where are you going to college? We, the coaches, we expect a lot from them academically, and they have delivered in the classroom as well as in the race course. They inspire us. You inspire us, the coaches. Coaching is one of the best part of my days. It's one of, one of the best part of Coach Mohammed's day. We are as happy as you are about your success and perhaps even more. We look forward to your continued success in college and in your future professional careers. You are the future, and the future looks bright. Thank you for trusting us and allowing us to be part of your lives. Again, we thank the council for recognizing the girls' effort. Their success is a reflection of their work, commitment, and responsible behavior. It makes me very happy that you've taken the time to acknowledge them. They cherish, they will cherish this experience for life. Now, I'd like to bring my captain to say a few words also.
Welcome, Madam Captain.
Good morning. Hello. My name is Catherine, and I am the captain for these wonderful girls. These girls and I woke up for practice before the sun did, and we left practice to go home after the sunset. Our parents, of course, worried of our well-being, but our dedication for this sport is far stronger than anyone could ever imagine. The hard work we put into this sport and to each other is worth the while when we feel the satisfaction of victory. These girls came ready to practice and run their hearts out because that's what running is all about, whoever has the biggest heart. And I can promise you, every single girl behind me has the biggest heart. And they have the biggest heart in whatever they do, whether it be running or their education. That dedication they have grows even stronger with this sport like cross-country, and it follows them wherever they may go in life. And yes, we did win city championship, but we also won the ideologies of a successful life. Thank you.
Congratulations. Take a photo.
Congratulations, Canoga Park.
Now, Mr. President, when I said we have hunters in the house, I used the plural on purpose because we not only have the cross-country champions, but I'd also like to welcome, and come on up, guys, the Canoga Park High School Boys' Basketball Team, the twenty-eighteen Los Angeles City Section Division Four Champions. Come on, guys.
Right. Championship Day in City Hall.
It is. You can feel it in the air, the championship. This incredible achievement was a long time coming. These amazing young men brought the Canoga Park Hunters the first boys' basketball championship in their hundred-and-four-year history. What? That's right. I said a hundred and four years. Not that anyone here is that old, but the school itself is that old, and this is the first championship for the boys' basketball team. So it is truly amazing. The groundwork for this accomplishment, this twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen historic championship, began this summer. From the day, the first day of offseason training, they were building a fire in their bellies. And when the season started, that fire was in their hearts. And one of the biggest parts of this championship was the school's administrators. Principal Robert Garcia, Mr. Tony Recalde, Ms. Kalen Redmond, the athletic director, Lori Giacapuzzi. Together, they kept the team grounded and focused on this achievement. From the classroom to the court, these administrators care about the well-being of each of their students, and they know, and they teach, that the sport of basketball is about playing the right way. It's about showing kids that a great team, when you're a great team, you're successful by having each other's backs and working together toward a common goal and striving to make something happen. Now, this season was also special for another reason, because the community really came out for the team. Canoga Park community was engaged, and they are still buzzing with this success. Everyone wanted to be part of it. You could feel the energy in Canoga Park. The team wanted it for each other, they wanted it for the school, but they also wanted it for their community, and they brought pride to that community. Their goal was to win a city title, but to keep their team philosophy on the right track and bring everyone together in the school and the greater community. And they did deliver in an incredible fashion with a thrilling overtime victory over the Bravo Medical Magnet. Jose, sorry about that. The Bravo Medical Magnet in Boyle Heights. Yes, that's who they beat for this championship. Now, before I give them, Jose didn't even blink on that. Before I bring a certificate up, I want to, I want to bring the coach up, David Wilson, to say a few words.
First off, I'd like to say thank you for having us. This is a great experience for our kids at Canoga Park High School. I think one of the big things that people miss sight of now these days is, in some form and some way, we're all a product of the public high school system. And I think that's been lost. One of the things I love about our administrators at Canoga, they really care about our kids. We really focus on the character of our kids. No matter where we go, that's the forefront. Today, we're building stronger, more efficient, more vibrant students than ever before. Their means are much greater than ours. But even though they have everything, they still need fuel. We are the fuel that gives them the temperament to get up every day, to go to school and thrive. That is my job. That is my position. And I'd like to bring up my captain real quick, Jake Gomez, to speak a little words as possible.
Good morning. My name is Jake Gomez. First off, I want to say thank you, Mr. President, for having us and city councilmen. It is beyond a pleasure to be here. And let me get started here. I'd like to start off with reading a quote by Coach Wilson he made in two thousand and six when he first got the job here at Canoga. "The goal is to win a championship, and to reach that goal, you have to build your philosophy from the ground up with every colleague, player, and coaches on staff, as well as every fan that comes on staff, or for every fan that comes and see you perform, not play." And this doesn't happen overnight, but it will happen. This is our bio of our team. "The groundwork for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen historic championship began in the summer, from the first day of offseason training, building that fire in our bellies. And when season starts, that fire will be in their hearts." One of the biggest parts of this championship was our school administrators, Principal Robert Garcia, Tony Recalde, and Ms. Kalen Redmond, and our athletic director, Lori Giacapuzzi, keeping us grounded and focused toward achieving our goal. And they really care about our well-being and about our student athletes. "The sport of basketball is about playing, or players playing the right way and showing kids that you can be a great team and still be successful by caring and loving each other." But what made this, what made this season so special, Mr. President, is that this one, we did, we did it in front of our fans. The building of our new fan base was electric. The city of Canoga Park still has its buzz to it, and we wanted it for each other and for the city of Canoga Park. Winning a championship like this in your own city in some ways transcends the sport of high school basketball. Everyone wanted to be a part of it, and it's amazing. You can feel the energy. And our goal was to win a city title and try to keep our team philosophy on the right track and bring everyone together as one school and one community. Apparently, we have. What a reward for the city of Canoga Park. The hundred-and-four-year wait was over, but we're not done.
Congratulations. And well said. Well said, man. Well said. I'm so proud of each and every one of you. Well said.
Let's give it up and give them the certificate. Here we go.
Let's give them one more round of applause. To the champs! As Mr. Blumenthal's group is going to the back, you may want to move to the podium.
We ready? There you go.
Thank you very much, and good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure to welcome the Wilson High School Mules to Los Angeles City Council. And today, we are honored to provide our great Principal Martinez an opportunity to share with the teachers, the students, and the Wilson alumni a day in city council to celebrate eighty years of Wilson High School history. Congratulations. Wilson High first opened its doors to the Elserino community in nineteen thirty-seven. The original location was down on Eastern Avenue where Elserino Middle School is located today, and I hear that the first classes took place in tents and bungalows. Their first graduating class was about forty students, and that doesn't nearly compare to the over three hundred-plus students that we see graduating today. In nineteen seventy, Woodrow Wilson High School moved its new campus to Monoma on a hill. The new school was designed by renowned African-American architect Paul Williams. Workers had to excavate over a million cubic yards of soil to regrade the hilltop and use three thousand five hundred tons of steel for the main buildings. The end result is a spectacular view of the city and Wilson becoming the first L.A. U.S.D. school to implement multi-floored buildings equipped with elevators and escalators to accommodate disabled students. The Woodrow Wilson High School of today is one that has not settled for anything other than being the absolute best it can be. Among other incredible educational achievements and programs, it graduates ninety percent of the senior class and reclassifies twenty-four percent of English-language learners schoolwide. Wilson sends ninety-five percent of its graduates to college, and it is a proud facet of the only K through twelve international baccalaureate program feeder pattern along with Farmdale, Elserino Middle School in the Los Angeles Unified School District. So along with that, you know, a great school, you always see alumni that are involved. And for more than eighty years, people have cared enough about this community, about this school, to make sure that it continues on and grows stronger. That carries on from generation to generation, and I want to thank the Wilson High School Alumni Association for all they do for our school. There's no effort too big or small for them to get involved with, from a book and fund drive to support the school library to more recent efforts to lobby successfully for L.A. U.S.D. to renovate the multipurpose room and give our students a quality multimillion-dollar performance venue. They are there time and time again. We're talking about a group of individuals who collectively work as one all-star team who literally put in hundreds of hours of volunteer time to assist the school they love. And before I present a resolution, I'd like to invite Principal Gilbert Martinez to share a few words. Welcome.
Mr. Principal, welcome. Let's give Mr. Martinez a round of applause.
Thank you very much. As a new principal at Wilson High School, I'm extremely proud of our students, our families, our staff, and all the wonderful work that they do on a daily basis. Currently, our graduation rate is ninety-one percent, the highest that Wilson has ever seen.
Well, that's, let me stop you. Ninety-one percent. Let's give them a round of applause.
And aiming to go higher. So a lot, I'm very, very proud of our students and our families, and we work very, very hard on a daily basis to have them succeed. Thank you, Councilmember Wezar, our Alumni Association, Julio Torres, and our wonderful, wonderful students.
Thank you. So on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, we'd love to present this resolution to Woodrow Wilson High School in its eightieth anniversary, and congratulations on all the successes. Congratulations. We not only celebrate the academic achievements of Woodrow Wilson High School, but we also want to take this opportunity to congratulate this year's girls' soccer team who won the twenty-eighteen CIF Southern California Division Five City Championship. Congratulations, girls.
All right. Championship Day continues.
And while students have been winning in the classroom, we see that Wilson also has a strong tradition of winning in sports fields. During the nineteen seventies, Wilson's football coach was a legendary Vic Kousha. Did you ever play against him, Mr. Sadio? Did you ever play against Vic Kousha, coach at Wilson?
Randy Garcia was the city Player of the Year before Kousha, as was Rick Hollenbeck was All-Northern League. So I'm a little bit older than, than Ronnie, but my brothers played with him, and Robert Diaz was All-League in that backfield with, with Kousha. They had an incredible, incredible team with an extraordinary offense. So no, I was spared that defeat.
Quarterback for Roosevelt High School at the time. So thank you, Mr. Sadio. And you would add to that. Coach Kousha led the mighty Mules to a thirty-nine-game winning streak with his son, the nationally record-setting quarterback Ron Kousha under center, leading the team to win the city's three-a championship in nineteen seventy-five, seventy-six, and seventy-seven. The Mules' football team also won in nineteen seventy-eight and most recently in nineteen ninety-six. And the boys' baseball team brought us a E-City championship in twenty-eleven. Those were some exciting times for Wilson and the Elserino community. And today, we'd like to congratulate the Wilson High School twenty-eighteen soccer team for creating new history, for bringing home the first city soccer championship in the school's history. The team, as I mentioned, won the CIF Southern California Division Five City Championship by beating Aspire Olend High School in Huntington Park by the score of three to two. But it is a great story. Let me tell you, the soccer team finished the season with a nine-ten-two record and showed their fellow students and opposing teams during the championship playoff run that a team with character, determination, and resiliency can achieve great things working together. And it's not about where you start, but where you finish. And the girls showed us that. So I'd also like to acknowledge and recognize our team members who include Krista Gonzalez, Angel Salazar, Esmeralda Guzman, Emily Nereo, Malia Haro, Lorena Garcia, Chelsea Contreras, Karen Lopez, Jacqueline Rodriguez. Karen Lopez, Jacqueline Rodriguez, Cassandra Lopez, Lorena Villarreal, Anahi Garcia, Brenda Martinez, Sandra Resendis, Diana Mendoza, Anahit Zul, Leslie Moreno, Blanca Hernandez, Destiny Alvarez Morales, who was selected to the LA City Section All-City Division V Team, and Zetele Hernando, who was selected to LA City Section All-City Division V Player of the Year. The soccer team was guided by Assistant Coach Juan Castaneda, Assistant Coach Jocelyn Castaneda Tapia, and led by third-year head coach Antonio Romo. Let's give our coaches a big round of applause as well. Thank you so much. So Coach Romo will share a few words as well. Welcome, Coach.
All right. Morning. Thank you, Councilmember Wezar. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Thank you, Peter, from the Wilson Alumni Association. Thank you, City Council, for having us and honoring us. This is a huge, huge privilege for us to be here. I'm extremely proud of our Lady Mules. As Councilmember mentioned, we are the first soccer team in Wilson High School history to win a city championship, so we're extremely proud of that. We are also only the second soccer team in all of Northern League history to win a city title after Franklin Boys Soccer did it in 1974, which means they are also, we are also the first girls' soccer team to win a city title in Northern League history, so let's give a round of applause for that. I have to also credit my, my assistant coaches, my JV coach and assistant coach Juan Castaneda, my assistant coach and goalkeeper coach Jocelyn Castaneda, my assistant coach Ketzia Jimenez, all of which are alumni from Wilson High School and have put in countless hours and energy into this program and, and building it, and we're looking forward to continuing to, to build it and looking forward to repeat next year so we can be in front of you all to do this all over again in, in a much more grander fashion. Their hard work, their commitment, their desire, their resiliency, I think all these things have been mentioned, but they really live that day-to-day. That was a process for us to identify with and, like I said, start, start to apply it every day in practice. We put in many hours, from the technical training and tactical training to also their mental training. That's where they, that's, that's what helped us arrive to, to win the championship. So I'm extremely proud of these ladies. Thank you all, and, and now I'd like to invite one of our captains. We have three captains. I'd like to invite one of them up to, to share some words. Chelsea Contreras, Senior Captain. Let's give her a round of applause.
Good mor, hello, good morning. My name is Chelsea, and I would like to speak behalf of my team. I would like to thank all of you for bringing us here to celebrate the history that has been made since this championship. Winning this championship for all of us has proved to many people that it's possible to accomplish anything and everything you put your mind to. I would also like to thank the coaches, volunteers, parents, the community, and the Principal of Wilson High School. They have shown all of us that hard work and dedication can accomplish something big, and that's exactly what we did. I'm proud of each and every one of these girls. Without them, I wouldn't be the person I am today. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you so much, and congratulations. And so to Peter Cabrera as well, from the Alumni Association, thank you, Peter, for all the work you do and the hours you put in. You are constantly at the school, and a strong school is as strong as its alumni base and that they continue to give back. So thank you so much. And on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'd love to present this resolution to the Wilder Wilson High School Girls Soccer Team on their first-ever championship. May we see many, many more. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar, and congratulations to Wilson High School. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, we're going to move on to item number two. Mr. Kukorian, are you ready for item number two, sir? Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members, today is the day that we will be hearing public comment on the city's budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. As you will recall, the day is limited to hearing public comment and will begin debate on the budget beginning Monday. So I just want to start off by giving you a brief overview of the work of the Budget and Finance Committee and the report that will be before you. First of all, we've concluded, the Budget Committee concluded two weeks of budget hearings totaling 33 hours of work. We considered and reviewed the budgets of 44 different city departments, bureaus, and agencies. We received more than 100 public comments and, in fact, took public comment each and every day of the budget hearings. We asked for, as a committee, and reviewed more than 160 budget-related memos and reports, all of which, for the first time ever, came in on time. So I very much appreciate the work of staff in, in getting that done. This is a budget that is approaching $10 billion. We have a general fund budget of $6.2 billion and special funds totaling $3.7 billion. The reserve fund that's before you is over $350 million or five, a little over 5.6% of the general fund. Again, maintaining our discipline in holding funds available for inevitable downturns in the economy so that we don't go through the same challenges that we've had in the past. In addition, the mayor and the committee increased the size of our reserve, of our budget stabilization fund as well. This is a budget that devotes $430 million in homelessness services. This is a two and a half, this is two and a half times what we spent last year. That, of course, includes the mayor's proposal to devote $20 million for shelter crisis and bridge housing and $10 million more that the Budget and Finance Committee added for homeless services as well. We're proposing to spend $41 million in sidewalk repair, a $10 million increase over last year, maintaining the size of the police department at attrition of over 10,000 sworn officers, and in addition, significantly increasing civilian hiring within the police department to free up more police time for patrol and other safety-related services. This budget includes hiring of 200 new firefighters and other increases in spending by the fire department. We've set aside $89 million for liability claims, an increase over the past. We hope that that will be a more reasonable number than we've budgeted in the past, but that is one of the question marks that this budget contains that we'll have to be monitoring closely. The budget includes a $2 million increase in the unappropriated balances for citywide tree maintenance. We've increased the number of animal control officers. We've increased the number of park caretakers. We added staff to reduce 3-1-1 response times, and there's a number of other increases to services that are finally paying some of the service dividends that comes from our improving economy and improving financial health of this city. But I also, before we bring up the public to talk about this, I also want to remind members that things are better than they were, to be sure. We're significantly healthier in this city than we were six years ago or eight years ago. But there are plenty of challenges still ahead of us. Among them are the almost inevitability that there will be, at some point, a downturn in the national economy, a recession that will lead to a reduction in the revenue streams that we have in this city that are so economically sensitive. We have to continue to be concerned about the city's liability claims, which don't seem to be trending downward yet. We're still working on trying to have more robust risk management, bring those numbers down, but we're still faced with the challenges of, of judgments against this city. There are increasing workforce costs, including the fact that we have our collective bargaining agreements up for renewal this year, and the increased and continuing pressure that our pension funds place on the general fund as well. And there's the continuing challenge of meeting the costs of police overtime. So these are unquestionably challenges that we still will need to face. So I just urge all members to be cautious about being too confident in the fact that we have positive trajectories because we have to be prudent about those risks going forward in the future. So we're going to be inviting up, in a moment, the Neighborhood Council budget advocates to, to present on the budget. We'll be inviting members of the public up to speak in a moment, but I do want to just note that, I want to remind all members that Monday will begin debate on this budget. We will not be debating it today. But I want to urge you today, if you have any motions that you'd like to propose with regard to this budget, please complete them and submit them to the CLA today. Don't try to do it while we're in the middle of debate on Monday. I urge you, get it done today. And it must be submitted, your proposals must be submitted to the CLA to put them into a proper budget motion format, or else they won't be considered. I'd also like to remind you that any motion that has a budgetary impact, I will ask the Council President to refer to the Budget and Finance Committee. They will not be considered and voted upon on Monday. Those will go to committee for consideration if they have a budgetary impact. So please, remember again, members, get it done today, please. So with that, I'd like to invite up the Neighborhood Council budget advocates to present on the budget. And this is a little bit of a departure from our usual practice, members. Usually, since I've been budget chair, I've invited the Neighborhood Council budget advocates to have a seat at the table during Budget and Finance hearings, which they have every single year. This year, unfortunately, in, in the course of juggling 44 different city departments and agencies, the schedule got a little bit jammed up, and we weren't able to meet the scheduling needs of the budget advocates. So we had to defer them until today. I thank them for being with us today, and I thank them for the work that they do throughout the year in analyzing the budget and presenting the views of 96 different neighborhoods around the city of Los Angeles. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the Neighborhood Council budget advocates.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Welcome, everyone. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Why don't we go around, Brian, starting with you, and we can introduce ourselves?
Is there a microphone for you, sir? We can't hear you. Maybe you can share. I apologize for that. We do need to have you, go ahead, so it can be into the record, your name again.
I'm Brian Allen with Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council.
Joanne Yovanik Garb, West Hills Neighborhood Council.
Barbara Ringette, Silver Lake Neighborhood Council.
Deidra Greenaway, Northridge East Neighborhood Council.
Liz Amston, Historic Highland Park.
Jack Humphreaville, Greater Wiltshire.
Howard Catchen, Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council.
Carol Derby David with Park Mesa Heights Community Council.
I guess the first order of business is we'd like to thank the Budget and Finance Committee for two things. One, allowing us to come here. And the second thing is, for the 33 hours, if that's what it was, of torture, I mean of good, of good, of lots of fun. I also thought it was great that they are televised, so as opposed to schlepping downtown, we get to watch it, you know, on our TVs. A little bit about the budget advocates. Over the past year, the budget advocates met twice every month. We also spent a considerable amount of time interviewing many, many of the department heads throughout the city. We issued our preliminary white, white paper in November, November of, of last year where we made 12 recommendations regarding the budget. Unfortunately, none of them were addressed, nor were the recommendations of the previous years addressed, including those, including revenue-producing ideas. And speaking of revenue-producing ideas, Barbara, could you maybe go through some of the ones that you mentioned in the past, or in today?
Yes. Last year, budget advocates presented 25 revenue-producing ideas to the Budget and Finance Committee. This year, we identified a number of additional ideas to produce revenue. A few of the ideas remain in progress, while none of the new ideas have been looked into that we know of. Jack Humphreaville and I are serving on the city's Revenue Generation Advisory Commission, meeting monthly beginning in March of this year, three months ago. We are exploring a number of ideas under headings of: Revenue Expansion, Revenue Policy, Financial Transparency and Efficiencies, Fee Development, and Expenditure Savings. The commission is starting with three of the ideas. First, Payment in Lieu of Taxes, known as the PILOT program. The question for the city: Are institutions paying for the city's services they receive, such as sewer fees? The second, Financial Services Transparency and Evaluation. We're looking at bank fees, costs of investments, including pensions, that is savings for the city. Third, Tax Expenditures and Tax Breaks Review. It's a review, a cost-benefit analysis of past projects. We're hopeful that we can identify some good, large revenue sources. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, could you read Jay's remarks, please?
Thank you. To, to...
These are the remarks of Jay Handel, who's our, our co-chairman, along with Liz here. He's unfortunately unable to be here. He's stuck back in Brooklyn visiting his grandchildren. He thought that might be a better use of his time.
Thank you. Good morning. His comments are as follows. This has been a very difficult year for the budget advocates. The number of departments, a number of them never called us, including your own LAPD, the largest single share of our budget. In addition, when our mayor held his release of the budget, the budget advocates were not invited into our house to hear directly what the mayor had, had to propose. Then to top it off, the hard-working advocates arrived to present the budget and finance, but were held off until the afternoon, making it impossible for those attending to remain as they have paying jobs and are not from the city, so to, so not considered the city family. All this is very disappointing, especially to those of us who have dedicated and spent hundreds, if not thousands, of hours fulfilling our charter mandate to report on the budget and deliverables. We are tired of being asked to come to the table only to find out it is the do-the-dishes. We want to help plan the menu, not just do the dishes. We represent over 1,800 board members and 4 million stakeholders. Neighborhood councils will never have credibility if it doesn't begin right here and right now. Hear our voices, let us in. Open up the budget process in the beginning. Mandate departments to work with us, us, the advocates, in the beginning of the budget season. We ask your body and the mayor to open the doors to the mayor's budget team as well as the departments and allow us to sit in on the discussions as opposed to handling us budget already cooked and telling us, just swallow it. It is time for the neighborhood councils that are respected and included. Thank you.
President Wesson, members of the City Council, thank you for having us. In 2014, when I became a budget advocate, the mayor called for priority outcomes to make Los Angeles the best-run big city in America by promoting good jobs for all Angelenos, creating a more livable, more sustainable city, and by partnering with residents and civic groups to build a greater city. Yes, as Councilmember Kukorian says, there are challenges, but how does this budget move us towards solutions? Where are the jobs? How is the city more livable? Where is the improved infrastructure and services? How are spiraling pension costs being contained? These are the points that need to be addressed to ensure a decent budget, points we don't see contained in the proposed budget to the extent we need them. And where is the transparency that would allow budget advocates and neighborhood councils to help the city find solutions? What happened to accountability? People don't want promises, we want outcomes. Economic resilience means a better budget and long-range planning. Accountability, efficiency, not a tacit endorsement of departmental silos and not balancing the budget yearly on our children's futures. There have been four budgets since 2014, and we still have a deficit. We still lack services. We still need well-paying jobs for all and a livable city. For this, we need to see substance in the budget, not a shell game. At a time of record income to the city, we want to see real reserves, not cover-ups of unbudgeted but anticipated costs for... of unbudgeted but anticipated costs for labor, for pensions, for services, for infrastructure. We call on you to do your duty and make sure this final budget is adjusted to put us back on track to be that greater city. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Deidra, would you like to talk a little bit about the homeless situation?
Thank you for having us, council. I want to present the issues that I am concerned about regarding the homeless. Changes needed to improve outcome and accountability for LSA and their management of Measure H funding for the homeless. Since they serve both Los Angeles City and Los Angeles County, it would be prudent to assess their capability to manage the increased funding levels resulting from Measure H. There are failing, many service planning areas, particularly Service Planning Area 1, who have homeless families who have been waiting for needed services since November of 2017. They are in need of oversight, and we need to make them accountable. Thank you.
Brian, you had some comments? Thank you, Deidra.
Thank you for receiving us. I started out last year at this table addressing an issue that was, in my opinion, was very important to performing our duties. And that issue is that we are not, as budget advocates, we are not in the development stage of the budgets. In order for us to do the jobs that we're being asked to do and provide the information that we are asked, as an example, Councilmember Kocorian asked us at the table last year, what departments do we suggest removing? And we can't answer questions of that nature because we're not in on the development stage, so we don't know the details to the degree that we should know. As an example, we have four major departments all providing financial services, and there is no singular guidance to those. We should have a better financial, budget and financial operation that allows for someone to oversee that, just as oversight is necessary to anything. I come from 40 years of being a CFO in accounting, and proudly, I am also a graduate of Belmont High School. And we don't have the ability at this point to get to the basics. In ITA, they're trying to finish up the procurement system, another $2 million on the third go-round. And if you look at that very closely, unless we're in the development stages and can see the details, there are very large numbers in the contractual services that are not identified.
Let me stop you for a minute, please. We're having challenges and challenges in listening, so if we keep it down, please, please, shh. So sorry to interrupt. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. So it is imperative for us to do the job that we're chartered to do, to get to the details. And we tried this year to contact the budget team, the mayor's budget team, and we were, for all intensive purposes, rebuked. We would like to be embedded in that team. We would like to be able to see what is happening in the beginning, see the details, and be able to make comment on those items. Without that, I think our one- to two-hour per meeting with general managers or top people relies on our previous experience in business to bring forth legitimate and qualified opinions. On top of that, we know that the neighborhood councils are a 15-year, going on 16 years now, and they are in sore need of better training. We spend $4 million, or attempt to spend $4 million a year, and I am not sure personally whether everyone on those teams know exactly what they're supposed to be doing and why. I go to a lot of meetings, a lot outside mine. I see what's going on, and I have a very strong opinion that, and the budget advocates in total agree, that there has to be more training. The NCA's have to be trained better and engaged, and the members of the boards have to be trained better to know that their, know their responsibilities, their authorities, and the procedures, so that they can effectively perform their duties. With that, I think I've addressed enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. You know, Brian brought up the point that the transparency and the oversight. We budget advocates are essentially your citizens' oversight committee to the budget. And it's a, it is a responsibility that we all take very, very seriously. We work with the departments, and we talk with the people, and we find out what's going on, the nitty-gritty of what's going on, not necessarily what you hear from the general managers. With that, a very simple revenue enhancement that I have suggested to several council members, and I have not seen any action on it. Where you have the county and the city meeting, there is dumping from the county onto the city because there is only a $5,000 fine if they get caught dumping on the city's property. If they get caught dumping on the county's property, it's $10,000. So why not take a chance and do the $5,000? It's not that much. One of the things that you can do is either have parity with the fee, and that's what, a simple ordinance? That's not, it doesn't take very much emotion and ordinance. And it's a revenue generator for the city. My suggestion would be to increase it to $15,000 and let the county take their responsibility. But that's my, that's mine. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here today. Spoken a lot about the work of the budget advocates, and indeed, we do put in a lot of time, and we are very, very serious and committed to seeing that communities' tax dollars are used efficiently and that departments within the city of Los Angeles strive to work within their budget and the city as well. My contention is very simple, I suppose. In life, it's often the small things that count. And to that, I think that the city likes to try on an ongoing basis, to try to find the golden geese that lay the golden eggs. My, again, my contention is, I think that the city needs to look more under the sofa cushions to see what exactly is available there. I mean, I can't tell you how many sofa cushions I've looked under and how many Sparkletts bottles I've filled up with coins. So there are definitely opportunities there to be pursued. And to that end, such things as bike licensing fees at point-of-sale and thereafter on an annual basis, and to impose requisite fines for noncompliance. Another issue of which, for me, it's somewhat blasphemous, and I might be drummed out of the core, but any given weekend, Saturday, Sunday, and during the week, there are real estate professionals who put out open house signs. And there are laws that prohibit the posting of bills, signs, and other notices on public property. Sorry? Oh, okay.
Howard, just go ahead.
Yes, thank you. That there, as I say, on public property, which Realtors, of course, use to lure people into open houses, as well as notify brokers of them. These laws really have not been enforced, as far as the fines. The result is that on any given Sunday, Saturday, sidewalk corners, street medians, and such, are jammed with signs each weekend. I would recommend that if unpermitted signs are posted, fines start at $100 and escalate to $500 on the third violation, so at which point it becomes a misdemeanor. Real estate professionals can post a sign on the property being showcased, but not at nearby intersections or streets, but must remove, remove them at the conclusion of the open house. I mean, I'm sure you've seen open house signs that linger for weeks and weeks and weeks. And then just to conclude, I'd like to point out that within the city of Burbank and other cities throughout the United States, there are open house permits required, anywhere ranging from as little as $10 up to $25 per sign. And if you figure that that's done on an annual basis for the thousands upon thousands of signs that there are throughout Los Angeles, that could add up over time to be somewhat significant revenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara, I think you had some comments before I finish up.
I have two concerns. One is regarding the Ethics Commission. We are living in a time when the integrity of the electoral process at the national level is threatened. The city must assure transparency and the reliability of our local elections in order for our citizens to have confidence in them and in our government. So I'm hoping that when Ethics comes up, that you'll look at that closely and provide additional funding. Second, this has been a year of many emergencies. And there have been fires, Las Vegas and school shootings even today, the threat of terrorism, and even of nuclear attack, and the inevitability of an earthquake. Here are my questions. Will the city enhance the city alert system and highly publicize how to sign up? Most people don't even know an alert system exists. Will city departments work together to address these concerns? In our white paper, we made suggestions that include studies to possibly revise building codes, burying power lines, mailing announcements in DWP bills to sign up for the little-known emergency alerts, working with federal, state, county, and other cities to remove dead trees in close proximity to the city, and enhancing existing emergency management department programs. I think this is essential to the safety of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, back to you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to give a little bit of an overview of some of our thoughts with regards to the budget. And I think the first thing is, is that we've reviewed this budget quite a bit, and again, we have serious concerns that the budget really isn't balanced. Rather, is an exercise in trying to hide the fact that the city has engaged in intergenerational theft, that the city is dumping billions of dollars of liabilities on the next two generations of Angelenos. The proposed budget does not take into account the raises for the civilian workers, which we have been told will be about $40 million. The budget relies on a transfer of $17 million from the reserve fund. That's a rainy day fund, and when our revenues are up $340 million and the seven significant revenues are up over a couple hundred, I don't think that's adequate, you know, justifies rating the reserve fund. The budget also relies on taking $85 million from the budget stabilization fund, and when that fund was approved in 2011, the idea was to build the fund, not to divert the revenues into ordinary daily expenses to maintain our streets, our roads, and our streets, our roads, our sidewalks. We also have the street damage restoration fee of $62 million. From my perspective, that's just another rate on the Department of Water and Power because, quite frankly, they think they do a better job of fixing the streets after they've torn them up than the, than the city, than Street Services does. We also talked about rating the special parking revenue fund, again, for $32 million. And then we have the issues, Mr. Kocorian's favorite thing about the city's liabilities, is $89 million going to be enough, or even throwing in the unappropriated balance going to be enough? Given that every day you pick up the paper, it seems like we're getting nailed for, you know, millions of dollars for whatever it is. From my perspective, if you look at these expenditures and eliminate the questionable sources of revenues, we've got a budget deficit of more than $200 million. The budget outlook, I think, is cooked. I think it's totally unreliable. Over the next four years, we're projecting total deficit of $77 million, including $100 million surplus in the fourth year. But if you factor in the raises for the civilian workers, the police, and the firefighters over the next four years, the budget gap goes from negative $77 million to over a billion, no, to $980 million, call it a billion dollars for round numbers. And then this budget doesn't take into account the monies that we need to repair our streets and the rest of our infrastructure, and that's probably another $200 or $300 million. I know Booscat, Joe, and Mitch have done quite a bit of work on the, on the streets. I think your number was 250 or something like that. And, you know, the city hasn't done anything despite having record revenues. It also doesn't include enough money, from my perspective, with regards to the pension plans. And if you, you know, and if you, and if you look at, if you take people like Warren Buffett or Wiltshire Associates and some of the people that are pretty knowledgeable in this, they'd say the pension discount rate ought to be 6%. If that's the case, the deficit goes up to $15 billion, and that would cost the city about another $500 million a year. So I think, you know, when you look at the outlook, you know, we're talking about a shortfall on realistic accounting of over $4 billion. Now, you'd say, well, you know, you're smoking dope. Well, I'd be happy to share the, you know, share the numbers with you. But, you know, so I think that they're neat, you know, my big pet peeve here is I think we need an Office of Transparency and Accountability. That was recommended, which you recommended, actually, Herb, in April of '14, that you thought that was an excellent idea. It hasn't even received a council file. The, we say that the controller and the CAO and the CLA are responsible for giving us good numbers. Well, these numbers, from my perspective, are completely faulty. If you were in corporate America, you'd be out of a job if not in jail. So I think we'd like, we'd like to have a little bit more transparency. We'd like to have monthly meetings. We'd like to set up, set up the Office of Transparency and Accountability, and we'd like to review in detail with you our 10 recommendations that we made this year. Although we had many, we tried to narrow it down to 10. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for all your service, and thank you for coming in to give us your point of view. And Howard, I'll see you around. And Joanne, I need another photo of Spirit, because I'm sure she's older than the one I have right up here on my desk. Anyway, thank you all so very much for your work. So now, Mr. Kocorian, did you want to say anything, or can I go into comment, public comment?
Straight to public comment, please. No, just, you can go straight to public.
All right. So why don't we start with Mr. Herman, Mr. Previn, Mr. Dan Dekler, please come forward. George Bazidi, come forward. Okay, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from CD2, and I'd like to thank the budget advocates. It is a little bit of a heartbreaker. They do work very hard. They're very smart. These are people who volunteer, and yet, the description of the way the city has received their input is just heartbreaking because you could use it, you could use it. I really appreciate Mr. Humphreaville's contextualization of the real problems. And as regards to the liability, I mean, this is an endless cycle, and the city continues to push for ordinances and plans that result in more litigation. So, you know, we got away from the judgment obligation bonds, but it's a real, serious problem. And I would ask you to waive the privilege and talk about the liability issues out in the open, and we'll watch the liability will reduce in size. It's just unbearable. And the number of meetings where you give 30 seconds at the beginning of a meeting or a minute, that's not real comment. You should list, like, agenda for any television program, when you're going to talk about it. The public who are on that item, say transportation can come down and hit it at that time. It's just, it's just silly, and I really hope that you will take it seriously going forward, because you can't keep moving the balls around forever and ever.
Thank you. Dan Dekler, Ms. Ramirez, George Bazidi, Sean, Ms. McAllister. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Herman.
Caution and prudent oversp-
Cautious and prudent overspending. Things are better when you got $10 million, but it's even more better when you got $2 million more to spend on nonsense, corruption, abuse, and waste. The same way Paul Krikorian under LLC, Yassari and Assari LLC have abused our city because Mr. Krikorian doesn't have a bar license to practice law. Hypothetically, though, he should not
Just get on the subject, Mr. Herman.
Assert any liability against the city because when you pay outside attorneys to deal with the budget, you're sure how fucking up the deficit.
Next speaker. Next speaker, please.
Thank you very much.
Please get a silence in the back. Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, clearly, as our previous speaker, Mr. Herman, spoke, we have a lot of waste and abuse in this city. Here, the Budget and Finance Committee, supposedly, we're supposed to have the best minds here that would, that could budget the finance in this city, and yet we are spending most of, if not all, our money here. All the revenue that is generated and brought into the city, it is now paying off all the lawsuits that are coming in in bulk piles into this city. How is that possible? And again, you're not able to provide adequate housing for the law-abiding citizens, and we're not even providing a budget to protect and serve the military veterans as Garcetti said he promised he'd do, which he failed to do. And again, we're not doing anything to protect and provide for the reasonable law-abiding citizens, but we're too busy subsidizing these goddamn fucking West Coast gang.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Yeah, I'm for this item. Yeah, I'm for this item.
Okay, next speaker, please identify yourself. Do I have Margaret Malloy? Please come forward.
You know me perfectly well. George Bazidi, former Director of Policy, Congress on Racial Equality, California. And you remember Celeste King IV. You guys all helped make sure he died. Not one of you people here is accountable for nothing. I got your chief of police with felonies recorded, okay? I got your city attorney with felonies. You don't give me my exculpatory evidence, and you don't give me the budget so I can analyze it? You see those homeless people? I'm organizing them right now, and I'm going to teach them law and budget. We're going to fix your budget.
Hey, let's get on this subject, then.
If you people can't get a hold of your money, maybe you should give me the budget because you've had a year. I take 15 minutes to analyze school district budgets like Baltimore, not having any federal funding at 21 grand, they had money. You have money. You don't need to get fees for signs for this foolishness. You people are stupid and corrupt as hell. Thanks.
Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Patricia McAllister, a teacher and an advocate to tear down this crooked city government here. Now, I have studied accounting at Chicago State University, graduated cum laude. Okay, now, I found in the budget, I have all four, five books, that you're giving the city attorney $128.9 million for salaries. Now, the gentleman mentioned earlier this unrestricted revenues, you're giving the city attorney an additional $158 million. So we're talking about 300 million. Unaccounted for money. I believe that's where the scam is in this city. Money, and this is what I believe based on my research, city attorney, homelessness, and the other area you all know about. You guys on this council taking all of this money throughout the year that's not budgeted, and I believe you put it in your pockets. We're going to do something about it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I like to address inequity. In April 2012, GQ magazine named Abbott Kinney Boulevard in Venice the coolest block in America. In 2017, 2018 Westminster Elementary School at 1010 Abbott Kinney Boulevard in Venice is a Title I LAUSD unified
And, Mr. President, I don't see how this relates to our budget.
Okay, please relate it to the budget.
Students.
No, relate this to the city's budget. That's the item, so go ahead.
I'm telling you, it's called inequity. How do you proportionally share monies throughout the city? The richest, the hippest street in America has 86% low-income kids. We don't have bathrooms. We have 1,200 homeless people in Venice. We have one set of bathrooms open at night as an experiment. We don't have drinking water.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Now, Mr. Spindler, you can sit down. I don't have a card for you on this item. But here, I tell you what, just come on up and get your minute, and let's count that towards its time.
So, we'd like to thank Paul Krikorian for his budget. So what we have is we don't have enough money for homeless. We don't have enough money for outside counsel. We don't have enough money for police overtime. And we don't have enough money to cover the Caustor's deficit, which Paul Coretts has been trying to reduce the rate of return for the pensions to 7%. He understands this. That's why he doesn't get a chance to talk instead. Our favorite goat, Paul the Goat Krikorian, he takes over the whole budget, and he just runs roughshod over it. Paul Krikorian, a man with a suspended bar card. Paul Krikorian, the dumb asshole.
Stay on the subject. Stay on the subject. Okay. So I'm going to close, Mr. Clerk, the public hearing, public comment on this item, and we'll continue it till Monday, special meeting.
That is correct, sir. Monday at 9:00 AM.
Okay, let me get Mr. Murphy back up. 11, 12, items 11, 12, and 13. Mr. Herman, 11, 12, and 13. Come on up.
11, I'm against. 12, I'm for. 13, I'm against.
Sean, why don't you take your general public comment as well?
Yeah, general public comment. The sanitation needs to work harder about getting rid of these bulky items, the big bulky items, like I saw a bed lying on the curb near Burbank and Laurel Canyon. They need to work harder.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, and your name, sir?
My name is Eric Coupure, and I'm
Your name is what?
Eric Coupure, C-U-P-U-R.
I did not call you, so you have to wait till I call your name, Eric. So I'm looking for Mr. Herman now on items 11, 12, 13. So he gets his two minutes in general public comment, and then if we could have Mr. Previn, 12, 13, in general public. Yes, sir.
So what consideration of motion am I speaking about, Mr. Weezer? Or that to you, Mr. Krikorian? For relative to below the market value sale of one motorcycle at a budget deficit cost by the Los Angeles Police Department, who at this point is in litigation over a 50-year-old man raping a child, I find that the LAPD museum is eligible not to purchase the motorcycle, but the city award the museum a surplus of $100,000 upon a free motorcycle. So this way, the vehicle identification number matches a budget number, a real budget. And then I go into community, communication, ordinance, a first consideration for established salaries at the new fucking world-class airport. You know why I call it the new fucking world-class airport? Because it deals with labor fucking relations, and I'm a labor advocate. Until every personnel at the LA airport, those hear my voice, get what they deserve, $50 an hour. And I authorize that $50 an hour because you heard the budget is doing A-OK. And as long as we have Yassari and Assari LLC under Krikorian, we can never lose. We keep giving money to white niggers. Put the lights on. I pay the budget in this city. Put the goddamn lights on so we could hear what the budget's all about.
Let's give him his minute. Mr. Herman, your minute for public comment.
So, back in the days when Herman Jason Weston said that my public comment was offensive, is it offensive? You know what's offensive? I find Tony Cardenas' sexual misconduct offensive. I find the conduct of Jose Weezer inappropriate. I find the conduct of Nury Martinez supporting sexual crimes against children. And after all, LAPD was on the news for fucking a child at their home. What the fuck is going on with society? Do you got no ethics and morals? Besides that, if you would just give Wayne Spindler a goddamn check, you'd get the motherfucker out of the city business. But as long as he's here, we're here, write us a blank check so we can go support homeless foundations. Fuck you!
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is Mr. Previn here? Ms. McAllister, you'll be after Mr. Previn. You'll have item 11 and then your general public comment. Mr. Previn, you can speak now on items 12 and 13.
Sure. Are you not calling one? Is that just?
Mr. Previn, you can speak on items 12 and 13.
Okay, that's fine. I didn't sign up for it. Fair enough. So am I blowing all my time on the items you haven't called?
Mr. Previn, you can speak on items 12 and 13.
12 and 13, sure. The motorcycle donation to the LLC? Sure. I have a little experience with that because we have some LLCs that come around and like to get donations from our local neighborhood council, and Ethics Commission had talked about these LLCs. They raise the limit to 2 million, it's got to be over 2 million for them to have to make the kinds of disclosures that other groups have. So it serves as a little buffer for council members to get things done, to pitch things to various. Here, it's the police officers. We had a request from our Lower North Hollywood PD pals group. They did a little money from the, so the city gives the LLC the money, and then the money is spent without any oversight. So, you know, the LLCs, there was a big article in the New York Times, I know you read that one, about how this is a problem and people hide, especially in the real estate business. Today, in one of your items, you've got Sasson cake, you're going after one of his LLCs. It's very murky unless you have the time to bore in, and even then, sometimes you bump into a dead end. So I don't know what to say about that. I wish we could find a way to require LLCs who do business with the city to make disclosures, to make appropriate disclosure about who they are and what they're doing. Because otherwise, it's a kind of a laundromat feeling, which I don't think anybody is that excited about. Now, on your track maps, obviously, this is where the council districts, working with the BO, arrange for a kind of mapping. Usually, it's to give a little piece of property or to zone it a certain way. Now, in our neighborhood in CD2, as Blumenfield discusses with Sadio, you know, we have proposals, and I know you had a little rally, sir. It was very nice to see you and Mr. Westall as activistas once again, back connecting to your roots out there on the street to make sure that we can put some places to help people in our communities. Now, the only problem was the outreach was not great. They just kind of announced it. Now, maybe the outreach follows the announcement, and we're going to get Mr. Krikorian to explain what he's thinking about because there's a lot of nervousness.
Now, let's give him his one minute for public comment, and Mr.
Sure, I'd just like to echo.
Item one was continued, so that's why.
Well, I appreciate the response. Thank you. Not out of my time. But, look, thank you. You know, somebody, one of the speakers commented about, there's one restroom in all of Venice at night, and there's about hundreds of people on the street. I know Bannon is chasing, I think it's Weezer as the most, but, you know, it's not a civilized society, as Sadio will recall, to have a place where people can't take care of themselves, even in public. Now, today, we have in Grand Park, very big celebration going on for the, I think it's Market Night or something, where everyone's going to gather around, have a cocktail, and they managed to find a way to put porta-potties up. So it's very heartbreaking that we can't find a way, and I know we're trying. I went up to the 15th floor to a meeting inadvertently that was described by Meg Barclay, our homeless coordinator, as a private meeting about the $20 million to put up a tent somewhere. And I found that that tent, that Mr. Garcetti's going to try to get going for 20 million, and then the 10 million thrown on top for services, not until January of 2019. I mean, what is this, like an art project? I think we have to think of it more like refugees, and I know that that's not fun because nobody wants to spend a lot of money, but we have to.
Thank you. Ms. McAllister, you have item 11, so she gets one minute, then her general public comment.
Yes, item 11 here, you want to, under the communications from the city administrative officer and the city attorney's office, you want to create a new position and pay them $134,000. This is an airport labor relations advocate. Now, city attorney's office is named here, and whenever I see the city attorney doing something, they get some of that money. I want the city attorney's office investigated by the FBI. Not only, now, I went to visit the city attorney's office a while back because I was concerned about us losing our right to speak in here, and you know what they told me off the bat?
I think we've moved off item 11, Mr. President.
Let's move, ease back on to item 11, Ms. McAllister.
I am. It says city attorney, so if it's mentioned here, I can talk. The city attorney is in on trying to get this advocate. Now, I'm trying to explain something to you. Quit, listen, city attorney, I'm not afraid of you lawyers.
No, no, just stay on the item, man.
And he had no business interrupting me.
Just stay on, stay on the item.
I'll get on it right now.
Stay on the item.
Now, here's the deal, city attorney.
No, wait, wait, wait. Now, yeah, your general public comment. Give her one moment.
Okay, the city attorney's office, like I told you earlier, they want nearly $300 million. Now, guess how many people they hired? They say they have on staff 800, over 800 staff members in the city attorney's office. That is, this budget was created by organized crime. Over 800 people. We only needed maybe about 100 lawyers in this city. You giving these crooks over $300 million, and they giving the police 1.5 billion. We haven't had a riot since Rodney King, and you're not doing anything with immigration. Why do the police need 1.5 billion? I visited the city attorney's office, and I asked them, why are we being denied? You know what they told me? We're not here to protect the people. We're here to protect each other. And I'm not lying. That's what she told me. I was speechless. She said, we're here to protect each other, and my job is to turn this city attorney's office out. Turn them out because they're the ones who're making the money writing all these laws and criminalizing people.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Mr. Spindler, you can come on up and speak on item 11 and 13. But before Mr. Spindler speaks, let's vote on item 12. Madam Clerk, item 12, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, pardon me, there's been a request to send that item forth with.
Okay, so ordered. Mr. Spindler, 11 and 13.
Okay, so item number 11 is the fucking airport labor relations advocate. Now, we need $134,000 of blackmail money for this labor relations advocate. Because when you're working for labor relations, you don't talk like this. You talk like this. You see, you need an airport labor relations advocate, see? So whenever the labor gets out of town, you hire the appropriate people, you break a few kneecaps, and you get yourself the union in line with the world airports, and you need $134,000 of blackmail money to get it done. Herb Weston, of course, understands, being a chief mobster, you need $134,300 cash, and you're going to fucking give it to them now. Now, we get to the next mafia matter, 13A, CD5. The mafia wants 800 Detroit Street. They say no. You say yes. We say no. You say yes. The mafia wins again. 13A gets approved, and again, we give a developer something they don't pay for. Then we get to 1513B in the 15th District. 8th Street, another scam, but that's because $11,800 for a $4 million entitlement goes to Joe Busciano's buddies at WH San Pedro. And why are we going to give it to him? Because Joe Busciano's writing out Janus on to the FBI. That's why. Congratulations, 13Bs to the rat to the FBI.
Let's give him his minute. Let's give him his minute.
So, the one minute, of course, is dealing with the litigation against the city. They've been going into closed session. The chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, the delegate for this chair to the Claims Board is a suspended lawyer. Paul Martin Krikorian has lost his bar license and cannot legally practice law in the state of California, and that means Mike Fuer is doing what? He's representing the employment of somebody suspended from the bar and failed to report this on a form to the State Bar. So, now, the State Bar, the FBI, the Department of Justice wants all of the minutes for the last three years of all the closed-session items from the Budget and Finance Committee and the Claims Board. Let's have the transcripts, and let's see who's practicing law without a license. It's Paul Krikorian.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, let's vote on items 11 and 12, I mean, 11 and 13. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that we reconsider item number 10 for purposes of consideration of Amendment 10A, which has been circulated.
Okay, so, uh, we'll vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, now, we'll vote on the, uh, the issue as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
I guess that's not gonna happen. That's probably not.
Let's take some of our general public comment.
Okay, let's go do that, then.
Lydia, I saw you earlier. And Matt Tenoco?
Good morning. Lydia Ponce of Venice. Been waiting since I was a little girl for the beats and bits and pieces of history that I was taught to be glorious truth, specifically liberty and justice for all. As an indigenous person, I believe in sacred places, and my relatives in Venice need and require that you support the Westminster First Baptist Church Preservation. Help us, I ask you, to preserve this as a building, historical building, as it was purchased and sold with fraud with one broker, and that is highly illegal. So, what about, uh, an unhoused, uh, domi-, uh, dominance in the, the dehumanizing sweeps? I saw one on my way over here at Ralph's on Lincoln and California Avenue. I think those need to end, if you're truly about the, um, about helping unhoused. The business improvement districts continue to police and profile people, and let's roll back the neighborhood councils as there are runaway local circus funded by thirty thousand dollars a year by you. And what about an anti-displacement commission to be real about stopping homelessness?
Thank you, Lydia. And if I could, I'm looking, is Eric still here? Capel, Eric, so you, you're behind this gentleman.
It's my clock. All right. You ready? All right. Uh, so, good morning, I'm the City Council. My name is Matt Tenoco. Um, I'm here mostly because I'm scared. Uh, about a month ago, one of my friends named Frederick Rune Fraser was struck and killed by a hit-and-run driver on Manchester Avenue, uh, in Mr. Harris Dawson's district. And then, the next day, at a memorial vigil, another one of my friends, Trel Stallings, was struck and severely injured by another hit-and-run driver, um, at the same intersection. Um, I'm sure, there's videos, they're very graphic, they're very hard to watch, which I'm sure many of you have seen. Uh, but the point that I want to make here today is that Manchester Avenue pursuant to the mobility plan, uh, is supposed to have a protected bike lane. Um, and had that protected bike lane been there as previous plans, as articulated by the city, by this body, um, maybe he would still be here today. Um, it's, it's hard. I'm, I'm a seasoned rider. I've ridden tens of thousands of miles on the streets, and I'm very hesitant now to do it more, and a lot of us are feeling very scared these days.
Thank you. If I can get Eric?
So, I think that some of the money that's, that's used on funding the police should be used on increasing patrols on Skid Row because people are still getting mugged, raped, gang raped, and a lot of nasty shit is happening down there, and nobody seems to give a fuck unless it's on their front door. Secondly, you guys need to arrest the corruption in Gateway City. There's, there's police departments dedicated to selling drugs to the local communities and working with gang members. There's inefficient leaks in the system that need to come back, that you guys need to create programs that encourage jobs that help the homeless, such as mental health professionals, professionals, et cetera. You need to make lots more accountable of how they waste their money. If you guys really care about homeless people, well, it doesn't look like it. And Hemp Creek, you guys should invest in more substantial alternative technology if you guys don't really wanna waste that much money on basic, like, regular housing. Also, I never thought politics was this shitty.
Okay, Eden Verrientos, Eden Noel Weiss, Danny Oder.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Eden. I'm a local resident of South Los Angeles, and I'm here today on the behalf of my friend Frederick Fraser, who was killed last month violently, uh, by a car. He was a victim of a hit-and-run, a growing epidemic in our city, and it hasn't got enough attention from city officials, the public, and law enforcement. I urge you to put, to put your efforts and funding into lower-income communities such as South LA to be a lot more bike-friendly. We can do this by creating bike lanes on main streets such as Manchester, where he, where he was struck. Where, i- it takes the support and commitment from both city officials and the community to save lives. A lot, a lot of people have, have lost their lives. We had enough. And I'm tired of being treated like roadkill. We, we have a boys. Please, put more bike lanes in South LA. Like, people are dying.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Weiss?
Counsel, uh, since Mr. O'Farrell cannot see his way clear to speak with me, uh, in private, five minutes of his precious time, I want to address my concerns to the council and to Mr. O'Farrell in public. Um, the, uh, uh, matter concerns, uh, uh, circumstance in Mr. O'Farrell's district where, in the situation, we had adjoining residential properties. One, a sixteen-hundred-square-foot residential house, housing eighteen people renting by the bed at between four hundred and fifty and five hundred dollars a month. Next door, there was a duplex. The duplex was about fifteen to sixteen hundred square feet. Fifteen people rented by the bed, obviously in violation of the zoning, but nobody's gonna enforce that zoning because we would have more people on the street. Um, going forward, uh, the City Planning Commission was so concerned about the conditions. In fact, there was thirty-one-sided violations. Uh, Mr. O'Farrell was written a letter on February 23rd. To be continued at the next public comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, and I'll be looking for Michael Hagerty, Carolina Goodman, Sean Meredith. Yes.
Uh, hello, City Council. My name is Danny Oder. I'm from the 10th Council District. Um, I'm here simply to say that I want to thank you for your support of bicycling infrastructure. I recognize that it is hodgepodge. As a cyclist, I find it hodgepodge, and I know it deters people at the same time that it also encourages them to bike. And I, and I want to say that this situation is the same thing that I've seen over my lifetime with recycling, with organic food, with solar panels. It takes thirty years for this kind of thing to become mainstream. We're in it for the long haul as bicycle advocates, and I hope you are too. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please. And, um, Mike Greenspan, if you're, could make your way down. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Michael Hagerty. Um, members of the City Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Um, I am an attorney at Kids in Need of Defense. Uh, I represent undocumented children as they fight to stay in the United States. However, I am not here to speak about that. I'm here to speak about the epidemic of traffic violence in our city. Um, I'm asking the leader, I'm sorry, I'm asking the, the City Council for leadership in addressing the lack of safety on the streets of our city. Uh, people are quite literally dying on our streets, and this is unacceptable. As an Angelino who bikes, who walks, and who drives, I fear that I or someone I love will also one day die due to the lack of safe bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure in Los Angeles and the culture of traffic violence that pervades our city. Our lives are in your hands. We need protected bike lanes. We need safe crosswalks. We need to slow vehicle speeds. We need meaningful commitment to Vision Zero, not just lip service. Our lives are not accept, uh, excuse me, our lives are not an acceptable cost to maintain the status quo. Please make our streets safe. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm also looking for, Ms. Richardson, are you still here, Jacqueline? Uh, Spencer Higgins, and Matt, uh, Matt Stewart. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Sean Meredith. Um, you know, people should be able to get to school, work, or wherever they're going without dying or feeling constantly threatened. Um, biking and walking should be safe for people of all abilities and ages, not just for the best-fit bikers out there who are able to keep themselves alive somehow. Um, our car culture is dangerous, and the safety deniers who are trampling over anyone to keep the status quo of car dominance, they're a threat to the future of our city and our world. In Los Angeles, pedestrians and cyclists are involved in fourteen percent of traffic collisions but account for fifty-one percent of the fatalities. Hundreds of lives are lost every year, and hundreds of families are shattered by these tragic outcomes. Livable streets create things we really want in the city, things you guys want. Livable streets, protected bike lanes. So, families who want safe streets are demanding courage and leadership from our City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meredith. Uh, next speaker, and maybe if Ted Rogers, if you're somewhere around, you can get in line. Please identify yourself.
Good morning, President Weston and council members. My name is Carolina Goodman. I am from the League of Women Voters, uh, Los Angeles.
Welcome.
Given the importance of the decision to name the new chief of the Los Angeles Police Department, we asked each of the finalists to respond to questions particularly relevant, relevant to immigration as well as questions regarding their main intended priorities and areas for reform. This morning, we will be emailing those responses to Mayor Garcetti with copies to all of you and hope that if you are on the hiring committee, you would take the time before the interviews to read what the three finalists wrote. We appreciate that the candidates have recognized that more must be done to reform LAPD's policies with regard to immigration. LAPD policy still facilitates the deportation of city residents who pose no public threat to safety.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I have copies of their...
Sergeants, can you please get she-ass copies? Thank you. Our next speaker, please come and identify yourself, sir.
Mike Greenspan? Mazel tov to Jewish Heritage Month. However, you forgot one aspect of Jewish heritage, the country club. Not the Jewish Country Club, no. I'm talking about the places like Tim Tebow's Tim Aquana Country Club in Jokesonville. It has no Jews. Fucking Baptist in the Klan, fucking Baptist in the Klan. The White Collar Klan, of course. Even Jesus Christ would get rejected for membership at Tim Tebow's Tim Aquana Country Club because he's Jewish. I'm sorry, Mr. Christ, we only have Christian members at Tim Aquana Country Club. If we push the envelope, our belly-belly-owned, belly-belly-owned, Harvey Weston for a second shfasa to join Tim Tebow's Tim Aquana Country Club. You just have to teach the fucking Baptist in the Klan what a shfasa is.
All right, that's, that's different. Ms. Richardson?
Because of the large number of shootings in neighborhoods, I was asked as this body, also LAPD, if they would get fingerprints of all current officers and all future current officers. Because, uh, people, many people in black neighborhoods and other neighborhoods have been shot without provocation, and they're black neighborhood. I was asked to ask you and, uh, this body in LAPD if they would get fingerprint checks of all officers, current and future, to have their fingerprints done from Moscow, Russia. This could be done very easily and quickly because it's automated. If this check is done, and it's done within seconds, it could possibly eliminate all unprovoked, many or all unprovoked shootings in the black neighborhoods.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Next speaker, please come and identify yourself.
This is, this is Matt Stewart, a transportation engineer. Um, I'm here to speak about the continuous killing of cyclists on the roads of Los Angeles. In a hundred years, I truly believe we will look back and see people driving around in single-occupant vehicles, three-thousand-pound-killing machines as the craziest thing that ever happened in the past. The technology for autonomous vehicles is coming, and it will help, hopefully, prevent cycling deaths. But there is technology already today, uh, that can transport people throughout the city in a much more efficient way than these huge vehicles, and that's bikes, scooters, what have you. And we need safe infrastructure, and I humbly ask that you please view us as a reasonable, mean, mode of transportation and support how we get around Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking for, is, are you Mr. Higgins?
Rogers.
Okay, so you're Ted Rogers. I'm still looking for, uh, Spencer Sims, Tamara Case, Tiffany Fagosa. And please wait till I call your name, Ms. Malloy. Yes.
Okay, I'm Ted Rogers. Uh, I have some letters for the council. If someone could take these for me?
Sergeants?
Thank you. A lot of us came out here today, uh, to speak for cyclists and pedestrians because we are, quite frankly, scared to death. Uh, we risk our lives every time we ride a bike. Every time I walk my dog along the street, uh, I'm in danger from cars turning in front of me while I'm on the sidewalk. Uh, so, we, this council has made commitments to Vision Zero and to building out the bike plan, and yet failed to follow through on these things. And frankly, I'm very tired of putting up ghost bikes. Uh, we're tired of losing our friends. Uh, we beg you. Uh, you'll see in these packets, a book and a CDD, a CD, a DVD, I'm sorry. We beg you to have the courage to do the right thing.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward, sir, and identify yourself.
Hello, my name is, is this on?
Yes.
My name is Spencer Sims. Um, I'm a cyclist, or at least was a cyclist. I used to bike about a hundred and sixty miles a week. Um, but I got hit by a car. I'm wearing a knee brace right, right now. Got hit by a car, hit-and-run. The guy took off and just, and just drove off and things like that. And Frederick died on Manchester Boulevard. I live in Inglewood. This is in my neighborhood. Now, I have to ride a motorcycle. This is my tenth day riding on a motorcycle. But guess what? We just need to just focus on South LA. We need to focus on building out that bike lane there. People are dying, people are hurt, people are scared. They're scared to go outside, they're scared to walk their dogs, they're scared to ride a bike, which you guys here know about the benefits of bicycle riding. So, please focus, please do whatever you can. Thank you very much.
Next, next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi, good day, council. My name is Tamara Case. Thank you for having us here today. I'd like to honor the fact we're here on Tongva and Chumash land, our ancestors. We're all visitors here on this land. Council, today I would like to address the fact that we have a housing emergency. This is actually a crisis and not something that can be dealt with in five to ten years. We need housing now. I'm here to speak on behalf of those voices that are, can't be heard or can't show up here today. There's a war here on poverty. We're building housing for big developers, expensive housing, and the only certain class of people can afford, and pushing people out, but yet still no affordable housing. Along with the war on poverty and making poverty a crime is a disproportionate violence of killing people of color and giving the money to the police state.
Thank you. Next speaker, and if I can get Margaret now, I'm calling you Malloy. And is there Susanna Scheck? Please come, get behind Ms. Malloy. And you are in the... You are? Oh, yes, Tiffany, yes.
Um, I'm standing before you all as something of an anomaly because I am an Angelino. I was born in a hospital named for a saint overlooking, um, a river named for Lady Queen of the Andals, and I have never had a car. Um, I get around by other means. Um, there's a completely fictional statistic that says that there are, um, one percent of bicyclists will, will ride anywhere, any hour, any road, any time. 1% of bicyclists will ride anywhere, any hour, any road, anytime. And of that tiny percentage, 1% is female. I am that female. My commute takes me through numbered streets at night, not first, second, third street, through the hundreds at night, and I'm brave enough to do that. I don't worry so much about myself, but I do worry about my friends because I'm a traffic safety advocate, and I have to follow court cases as you make it through courts, all the way to the end where I listen to victim-of-hug statements presented to the judge, and I'm scared that my friends will have to do that for me someday. I don't want them to go through that, ever, ever. Our streets must be safe for everyone who uses them. Fatalities are not a tolerable byproduct of transportation. Loss of life and severe injuries resulting from traffic crashes are unacceptable outcomes that we can address, and these are not my words, these are Mayor Garcetti's.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Malloy.
Hello, I'd like to talk to you about your initiative today, Save a Life. Thank you for starting that. We need it desperately, but we need equity in how people are treated in this city. We will be sending you documents this weekend, which we're begging you to review, asking you to de-establish the Venice Beach bid. It is just fundamentally flawed. They collected $1.7 million in 2017, produced no services, and laughed, literally laughed, while they attempted to create a motion on a refund. It's not a laughing matter. $1.7 million? When we don't have clean drinking water, or bathrooms, or shelter, or anything for our homeless people. So I'm asking you, please read this document that's coming your way. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Ramirez, if you could come and line up. And is George still here, Bazidi? Then George, you're back in line. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Susanna Scheck. I'm a resident of Los Angeles, cyclist, motorcyclist, pedestrian. We live in the law of the jungle right now. Before Garcetti took office, we had a mayor who had a vision and who was willing to work with LACBC to make our streets safer and to create more affordable housing. Their streets will not be safer until we enact a congestion charge, which I did the math, and we could have made enough money to fund our metro for all the money they were trying to raise in 2014 if we just added $20 a month to parking for commuters who come downtown. We cannot do anything about pedestrian and bicycle safety until we make it more expensive to drive a car, particularly for people who can afford other means. For people who absolutely have to drive, there can be concessions. And the thing is, that will never-- It's like, we are in a dangerous city. I have PTSD from, you know, having all my bones shattered in the Spring Street bike lane. I need to be in a safe city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez, did Spencer Higgins-- Did you come forward? Okay, yes, Ms. Ramirez?
Thank you. Stop the middle-class homelessness and poverty holocaust by these corrupted LA city officials and take down all the homeless tents down on Spring Street and Main Street from Caesar Chavez Avenue to First Street. Take down the tents down also at El Pueblo Park, where all the fucking ugly, filthy, nasty, violent, racist, hate-mongering, chungo Latino wetbacks and gang-banging pigs, thieves, and pussies hang out and divide all the stolen property from the innocent homeless, law-abiding citizens and our beloved United States military veterans. You will find all of it hidden in their tents, these violent, ugly homeless chungos and chungas and junkies and pimps and homeless mothers. Again, eventually, we're going to have racial riots, and they're going to start killing off the Mara Salvatrucha, the Mexican mafia hazard, 18th Street, Norteños, Sureños, the fucking FBI, the fucking CIA, and the fucking NSA. They're going to start killing them off, and that is what the people are saying on the streets. They're going to kill the gang-bangers and their families like they did with Pablo Escobar when they killed them off. They're going to kill them all now.
Thank you. George, George. No, come on, Ms. Ramirez, you got to be respectful to the next speaker. Okay, George, floor is yours.
Damn, maybe you should have some respect, fools. How about your chief of police going into prison? Go to fraudbuster.org, fools, you got the emails multiple times over the last three years. 5/9/15, I came in here and told you, people, that your chief was committing felonies by erasing the audio of the police commission meeting. PC132 Hobzac Rico! And you've cleaned the web of all your three guys up now. Sorry, no new chief of police!
George, keep it down. Go ahead.
It's about time, you fools, give me my substantial evidence. What's the name of your city attorney here? Because if you don't have it to me by the end of the day, not only Riza's bar license is gone, your city attorney's bar license is gone, and Jackie, Lacy, and Mike, you're going to prison for what they're doing to me. You're trying to send me to Division 95 to protect you assholes! You go look at the perjury by LA Unified on you, fools!
Thank you, George, thank you. George, George, your time is up. All right, your time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up. You're disrupting the meeting now. Just chill out. All right, so I'm looking for Spencer Higgins. Mr. Stewart, Matt, you already spoke, right? Who, is there any other public comment speakers? Would you guys come on up? Yes, ma'am, identify yourself. I can't hear you. Tell us your name.
Chaplain Ruth Summers-Twito, and my husband Chaplain Rebel Twito. And we thank you for giving us a time to speak. We had brought information about Honor Thy Father to you previously, and we have some additional information, but we also have a program that we're working on for homelessness and creating lower-income homes, and we wanted to just leave that information with you guys because women, we do our feeding programs and things on the street from Silver Lake to East LA, all the way to Santa Monica to West LA, all kinds of things. We do that on Thursdays all day long. I haven't had a chance to change clothes since Thursday. But in the meantime, what takes place is there are women and children that are being raped on the streets, and their belongings being taken, and some men are being taken advantage of, too. But if we have more lower-income homes, which we can build three two houses for like $65,000, and apartment complexes with as many as 18 people in there for $225, we just want you guys to know what we can do through the churches that we work with, and then that way you guys can do that. And please look at Honor Thy Father because there are some wonderful men in all the world, and we're honoring them.
Thank you. Thank you both. Sir, in your name, did you want to speak? Come forward. You want to-- go ahead.
Hi, everybody. This is a great day. I'm going to invite everybody out to the party at the Prowl Burg. My wife has the beautiful advertised material, so come out to the Honor Thy Father June 17 affair. Denise Estelle has been doing this for 17 years, and I was told that the Mr. Louis Gosage in the Office of the Gentleman was the recipient last year.
And this year is Brad Carson.
So, I guess this year, and I went to a meeting in South Central, Mr. Brad Carson will be honored, but you know everybody needs to be honored here. So, thank you. May God bless.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, excuse me. Honorable President, City Council. Thank you for your time and your service. My name is Mark Torres, and I was, I'm here today to talk about our children's safety in our public schools, in our military academies, and also our military institutes. It's come to my attention, when I was trying to make my photography website, that there's these things called "top-level domains" because .com has run out of combinations of numbers and letters for a domain to create a website. So they chose a bunch of words. And there's a company that purchased .school, .institute, and .academy. For example, Roosevelt High School, Belmont High School, Wilshire's Private School. All these schools are, can be purchased for $40 online from GoDaddy, and then for $5 more, they could get the email that can generate any staff--
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Torres. Now that ends general public comment. Mr. Herman, you do it again, or Mr. Spindler, you'll be removed. Okay, let's recess and go into the special. Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. Item 14 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, let's prepare--
I'm sorry, sir. Blumenfeld, Bonneville, Booskin, Ossoody, Lindner, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Kresk, Kucorian, Martinez, Ferrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 12 members present.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on 14. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
All right.
Mr. President, that brings us to items 15 and 16. They're items to which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, they're now before this body. So let's get Mr. Previn, come forward, Mr. Previn. 15 and 16.
Thank you, sir. We're in the special meeting now, obviously. And item 15 is the sale of the city-owned properties. We read about your exciting packaging together for the convention center, two giant towers that are going to be three-star properties, I understand, hotels, so we can get up to speed and compete with Las Vegas for various tourism convention business. Now, you know, we have-- Today, for example, you brought out on the lawn the "Unite Here" people, the hotel workers, and you know, there are some jobs that come with these visits and stuff. But the question of, is this the way forward for our city to be giving huge credits to hotel developers, as we do in the past? You know, we have to be fair to everybody, but we're fair to everybody who happens to be a big hotel developer, not the taxpayers who then underwrite it. We find ourselves hearing Jack Humphreyyill talk about our real budget, Terry Concerns, you know, once you look beneath the veneer that Kucorian has painted in. So, it's upsetting. It is a little bit upsetting because I don't know why-- You know, I don't understand how a giant tower full of people-- And why are we competing with Las Vegas? I mean, is that what we want this place to be, Los Angeles? This is a wonderful, vibrant community with so many wonderful things to do. I don't know that adding more hotel rooms and cutting a great deal for those folks is the way forward. Now, Prop K is item 16. This is, K does not stand for Kucorian, as I've said before, and it doesn't stand for Wesson World either. But you guys are great at taking these propositions, including HHH, and finding ways to move the money around without having proper meetings or-- Nobody knows what's going on. Now, here, it looks like you're taking $3 million from one of the Algen Suttons, a pool, I believe, in Mr. Marquis Harris-Dawson's district. You're moving $3 million from this fund to that fund to the-- But are you redoing the pool, is the question? When I first read it, it looks like I'm not even sure you are. You should be, and you shouldn't be taking extra money and putting it in Studio City where they're going to put like something that looks like an airport on our little park. And that's what we've been talking about. But we can't talk about it into a microphone or to people around because you hide the meetings and you don't have the meetings, and you plant the commissions--
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Sean, is there James Pugh? James Pugh, you after Sean?
Yeah, Mr. President. I am 15, I'm supporting. I am 16, I'm supporting, too.
Thank you, Sean. Mr. Pugh, followed by George, if he's here, and Mr. Herman. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, honorable council members. Thank you for the city's hard work to bring item 15 to a final decision today. I'm Jim Pugh from Shepherd Mullen, representing the applicant on this item. We've worked hard to bring it to this point and look forward to a positive vote, so we're respectfully requesting that you approve that item today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Herman. Mr. Spindler. Please come forward. You're going to start missing your time. Ms. Ramirez, start coming forward.
My understanding on item of surplus property-- No, no, no. Let's go to the one on the item about Proposition K for cunt assessment funds. Since the Cunts-Aligned Sutton Pool Project has authorized console cunts as part of the Proposition K for cunts--
No, you're off the topic, Mr. Herman.
We're talking about $3 million--
No, no, come on, just stay on it. One more time, and then you can sit down.
Now, to eliminate over-commitment of funding, $3 million is an excessive amount for Proposition K interest monies in replacement for source of funds. Although this committee has authorized it despite public comment because, as you read, no impact, submit it. So I find that the necessary technical corrections should amend and reflect public comment. That's item 16. Now, on item 15, regarding surplus property, such as for HHH, we find that city-owned properties shouldn't be given to Beverly developers-- I mean, I'm sorry-- developers in interest of an NPV, other words, MVP, for the city and Lightstone, Lidgetstone, DTLA, fuck your LLC, to provide as conditional obligations. The same way, during the budget comment, I said, "Fuck Paul Kucorian."
Okay, Ms. Ramirez. And let me, is there Scott Randers? Scott Randers? Ms. Ramirez, go ahead.
Thank you. With all the city-owned properties, we can build just enough homes to basically deter the homeless crisis. That's what we should be using and not making or developing hotels. Now, again, the hotel business is nothing more than racketeering where they hire all these fucking wetbacks and gang-bangers to rummage and steal all your ID--
Get on the subject.
So, having said that, again, use the city-owned properties to deter homelessness. House our military veterans first and foremost, and then house our legal, law-abiding citizens, and then deport the other motherfucking wetbacks and gang-bangers--
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ramirez, thank you. Your time's expired. Okay, George, let's see. George, come on. And you know you have to stay on the subject, George. You have one item.
Man, I'm more on the subject than you fools ever been. What are you talking about? I know these issues better than you do. I eliminated your office of public safety because you didn't do your damn job, fools! And you're trying to put me in the funny part--
And we are off topic, Mr. President.
Already, George, you're off. Already, George, you're off-topic, brother. Your time's expired. Sergeants, show him the way to his seat. No, you are not, George. Go sit down. You are not. You got to respect other people that are here. Go sit down. You're not even close. Go on and sit down. Spindler, come on. Come on, stay on the subject. He's disrupting the meeting, Mr. City Attorney.
He is. And he's shouting--
In fact, we should, let's show him the way out, Sergeant, and let him stay out there. Mr. Spindler, Mr. Spindler, stay on topic. The floor is yours. No, have him removed. Mr. Herman, do you want to leave, too? Because you're disrupting this meeting. Spindler, go ahead.
I don't want to break his microphone. Yes, I mean, this is such a heated hotel development incentives. It's getting so violent at HDIE. Oh, my God. We have to give land surplus property to the developer. If we don't give it to the developer, we'll all be shot. So the hotel development must be granted, or we will be shot. So please, I was against Lightstone, but as you can see, Lightstone will have all of us killed unless they get this land. And they're going to kill all of us, so please, just give them the fucking land. Even though it's worth $67 million, I say give it to them for a dollar, like the motorcycle, because it's hopeless. We just don't want to be hurt anymore. We're sorry, Lightstone. We're sorry for offending you, Lightstone. We love you, Lightstone. Please, Lightstone. I know you put a bomb under his car. We're sorry, Lightstone. So please, give them the hotel development incentive. Give them whatever they want. We surrender. Even the FBI knows that Lightstone has to get this money. They have to get this free land. And we know that Herb Wesson is afraid, too, and that's why. He's afraid of Lightstone. I'm afraid of Lightstone. But he can't get a TRO against Lightstone. They're too powerful.
Now you're off the subject, Mr. Spindler. Now you're off the subject, Mr. Spindler, go ahead.
Fourth construction of number 16. It's the Proposition Cunt K mid-year country programming report. Give them what they want, hands up, don't shoot, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So that concludes general public comment. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items, which I believe are 15 and 16. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tab you late, the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, we can adjourn this, I believe. Mr. Clerk, return to the regular?
Yes, sir.
And these two, all of these, these items, let's go forthwith. Now, if we could return to the regular meeting?
Very good, sir.
What's before this body?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted, they are referred. Announcements, members? Let's all rise for adjourning motions. And members, just as a reminder, Monday morning, 9:00 AM, let's be here on time so we can get started. So adjourning motions, I'm looking to my left, I don't see any to my left. I'm looking to my right, don't see any to my right. Members, again, don't forget, Monday at 9:00, this meeting's adjourned.